Adequate notice of the zoning board of adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and CoStar, our official newspapers on 30th of 2020 and posted on the bulletin board of this school building and the borough's website. Take roll call, Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Malango?
Here.
Mr. Gregg?
Here.
And Mr. Lisco?
Here. All right, thank you for joining the July 23rd, 2020 Board of Adjustments meeting. Will you please join the board and stand for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, April. All right, first up, can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the June 25th, 2020 regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Malango. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Palmizzano? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
I'm staying.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. All right, next up is a resolution approving the application for Corin and Dawn Miller at 1701 Surf Ave.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I've been preoccupied and for the three resolutions that are on tonight, if I could carry them until Tuesday's special meeting, and I will say with regard to the Surf Avenue, I have that it's just 95% completed, but it's long and I just, I really want, I will send that out over the weekend because I want everyone to be able to, I know that was a fairly intense hearing, so if we could just delay those till Tuesdays, my apologies.
No problem, Kevin. Thank you very much for bringing that up. That'll bring us right into our first application for Louis Mandia at 1708 B Street.
Okay.
Okay, before you, before you jump in, if I could everybody, just remind everybody to mute your microphone if you're not speaking. Thank you.
Okay, April, does the other, do you bring the other people up as panelists?
Yes, hold on one sec. Is it just the two of you? You gotta, I'm sorry, you're muted, so I didn't even hear you.
Okay, who's, who's on this call aside from my, aside from myself?
Yes, you, is it just you and your attorney?
Yes, thanks, yeah. I am expecting the architect, Constantinos, to be on the call as well. He had sent you an email earlier on today, I think two emails if not. Let me go ahead and, and see where he is. One moment. Apologies for, apologies for the delay. April, while we're waiting, how many, how many voters do we have tonight?
We have six.
Six. Hey. Hey, April, I have much apology about that. He's going to, he's gonna join within the next two minutes. If it's all right with you guys, if you don't mind waiting, if not, if you'd, if we could maybe circle up on this after the next one, that would be wonderful, just to, to not keep everyone here waiting. Thank you. All right, and just, just so you know, and I'll lead this up to your attorney. I, Nick, it's nice to meet you face to face. We have some items that we have to mark into the record and go over some things. I mean, do you wanna, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna, I mean, do you think your architect's gonna be like one minute or 10 minutes? Probably like, probably like five minutes. I would just, I would hate to keep you guys waiting. Okay, so you wanna go to another one and then come back? Exactly. I would, I would rather wait for
Okay.
You guys to discuss what you have to, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if anything administratively has to happen on then, at that end, or we can just move right on to our second application? Is that okay, April?
Yes, we'll just make an announcement that, that the Mandia application will be heard momentarily.
I mean, hold on while I switch out.
All right, while April's switching out, we're gonna hear our second application of the night, which is Matthew and Mary Ann Rineery at 107 19th Avenue.
Okay, April, do we need to bring anybody in?
No, she's coming in.
Oh, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm in the notification zone for this application, so I'm gonna have to recuse.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mary Ann, you there?
I am.
Okay, is it just you, or does there, is anyone else any?
We're both here, myself, Mary Ann and Matt. I think I'm logged in there.
You are. All right.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, in fact, I should have said this earlier, just for the record, our meeting, this is a lawfully convened meeting. Our meeting was noticed in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and we did advertise the login information, and we also have gone to special lengths to let people know that if they're having, given the coronavirus situation and barrier access issues, that we've given them April's phone number as board secretary, make alternate, that we can make alternate arrangements to attempt to have people make alternate arrangements to have access to borough files if they couldn't view it online. So anyway, it would be my recommendation that we have a, we are satisfying the spirit and intent of the Open Public Meetings Act, and I should have said that earlier. So now with regard to this application, a couple of quick things. With regard to Matthew and Mary Ann Rineery, 107, 107 19th Avenue, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Not comments on the application, that'll be later on, but just comments regarding the notice. And April, for the record, could you just give your emergency phone number or emergency or your email number so that people can access you or text you if they have questions?
Yes, you can use the email clerk@belmar.com.
Okay. And is anyone raising their computer arms to participate?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, so, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so be my juris, my, my recommendation that we have jurisdiction to proceed. And before we forget, we'll swear in Ted Bianchi. Ted, you are a zoning officer and construction official. Do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide will be the truth to best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, let the record reflect that our friend Ted has been sworn, and what we will do is we will mark into the record what we, as a board, have before us. So development application package will be marked in its entirety as A1. And we can mark as A2, the Borough of Belmar application checklist. And then as A3, we're gonna mark the borough, I'm sorry, the borough's minor land use zoning permit, and that's dated February 12th, 2020, and February 19th, 2020. And then as A4, we're going to mark the floor plans and elevations. And they are prepared, it just, it says, doesn't say it's prepared by Reilia Architects and Interiors, and it's dated March 20th, 2020, and it's consisting of, let's see, one, two, I think, three sheets. So that appears to be it for the items, and we can mark additional items later on. And Mr. and Mrs. Rineery, I'm gonna swear you in, and then I'm gonna talk to you about one procedural item, but just for the record, if you could state your name one at a time and spell it.
Sure, Matthew Rineery, M-A-T-T-H-E-W, last name is Rineery, R-A-N-I-E-R-I.
Okay.
And Mary Ann, M-A-R-I-A-N-N-E, same last name, Rineery, R-A-N-I-E-R-I.
All right, if you all would both raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, so let the records reflect that the witnesses have been sworn, and on behalf of Chairman Lisco and all the members of the zoning board, welcome to the Belmar Zoning Board. And, Mr. Chairman, I just, we have one little unique situation here. Ted, as I understand it, or Mr. and Mrs. Rineery, as I understand it, there's two dwelling units on your property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so your application is for a deck, and so this technically constitutes the expansion of a non-conforming use, Ted, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. and Mrs. Rineery, the only reason I'm explaining these somewhat boring details to you are because there is a little bit of a significance. So you need a use variance, it's called the D variance or a use variance, and under New Jersey law, you need five affirmative yes votes to get that approved. So if there were five people voting and four people voted yes, and one person voted no, your application is denied. For this type of application, you need five affirmative yes votes. And the reason I'm explaining this is, April, we have what, because of the recusal, we have five eligible voters?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. and Mrs. Rineery, I would respectfully submit to you that you have an option that you can say, I don't wanna go with only five, I'd rather have seven people because math is better with seven people than it is with five people, or you can say, no, I'm okay, I wanna proceed with five, or you can say, Mr. Chairman, if this is acceptable to you, hey, I think I wanna proceed, let me put the testimony on since I'm here and I'm ready, and I will decide later on whether or not I actually wanna have a vote. So the most important thing is, do you fully understand what I've explained, that you need five affirmative yes votes?
Yes, we do.
Correct.
Okay, and is it, is it your intention to proceed, or at least proceed with the testimony, and then you'll decide later on if you wanna have a vote?
Yes.
Proceed, yeah.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll proceed. Mr. Chairman, is that okay with you?
Yes, thanks, Kevin.
Okay, so, Mr. and Mrs. Rineery, what we're gonna do is just let me ask a couple real basic questions to get the ball rolling here, and then we'll totally turn it over to you. We're talking about the property at 107 19th Avenue, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and are you the owner of that property?
We are.
We are.
And how long have you owned it, roughly?
Since 1999, March.
I'm sorry, 1999?
March of 1999.
Okay, and my records reflect that there's two structures, there's a front structure and a rear slash garage apartment?
Correct.
Okay, and just for the record, while we're talking about the front structure, the use, is that used as a single-family home?
No, we have an upstairs apartment, which my family, my daughter currently uses.
I'm sorry, that's in the front structure?
Yes.
Okay, so there's two dwelling units on that site, I mean, in the front house?
Correct.
Okay, so let's just, so it's a, it's like two dwelling units, okay, and let's get, and what is it, upstairs and downstairs, or just?
Up and down, yeah.
Okay, so let's talk about upstairs unit in the front structure. How many bedrooms is that?
Two bedrooms.
And how many bathrooms?
One.
And is that occupied?
My daughter, my two daughters.
Okay, and CFOs, certificates of occupancy have been issued?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so the downstairs unit for the front structure, how many bedrooms is that?
We just reduced from three to two.
All right, was three, now two, and how many bedrooms? I'm sorry, how many bathrooms?
One bathroom.
One bathroom, and is that downstairs unit occupied?
We're sitting in it right now.
Okay, so yes, and that's your primary home?
Yes.
Okay, so then, let's go to the garage apartment. Oh, is that just one apartment?
One apartment.
And how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
And how many bathrooms?
One bathroom.
And is that occupied?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is there a written lease and a certificate of occupancy?
Yes, everything's current.
Okay, all right, so thank you for giving us the lay of the land, and now why don't you explain to the board what exactly it is you, you want to do?
What we'd like is to have access to our backyard from our home, so right now, we had a renovation, there's a door there, and we just need to be able to walk outside that door. So we just need a landing, basically a small deck, and steps into the yard.
Okay. And just for the record, what's the size of the deck that you're proposing?
It's a seven feet by 10 feet.
Seventeen by 10 feet.
Seven, seven, seven?
Seven, I'm sorry, seven feet by 10 feet.
By 10 feet.
And, okay. And do you have any other information to preside, to present to the board at this point?
Yeah, just really for ease, yeah, ease of use. This has become our primary residence. Just safety in the winter, to not have to walk all the way around in the icy driveway to get to a shovel, and to be able to walk outside in the summertime, that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, to me, it sounds like that might be the end of the presentation. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we'll open it up to board questions, and we'll start with Mr. Malango. And I'll remind you, you're on mute unless you unmute yourself.
Oh, Jess, good evening. I have a question on the drawings that you submitted. On the side elevation and rear elevation drawings, it's listed A1. There's all the information about the new deck?
Yes.
Okay, the left of that, it's showing, it says new six by six foot eight sliding glass door in battle?
Yes.
Okay, you look at the outline, I guess your architect or your designer put there, it says 10 foot, 3 foot, and 15 foot, correct?
Oh, we're there. 10, 3, and 15?
Right.
Okay, your deck is only gonna be 6 by 10, correct?
Seven.
Seven by 10.
Seven by 10, okay. I just wanna make sure we have that clear, because if you were to look at that, it would appear to be a different size. You see that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you. And, and even on this, on the next drawing, in A4, so it's A4, page two, the proposed deck is shown as six feet wide, 10 feet long, over an existing patio.
I only have A1 and A0 and C1, so I must be missing a drawing. Okay, but my point is it will be a 7 by 10 deck?
Correct.
No roof, no coverage, correct?
None at all.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Malango. With that, we'll move to Mr. Ross.
Or just material, is it gonna be wood or composite, or what do you?
It'll be a composite deck, probably a Trex or EZAC.
Okay, so maintenance-free, essentially?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I have no further questions. You're on mute, John, I, I think.
I was just about to remind somebody else that they're on mute. We're gonna move to Mr. Palmizzano.
Okay, I just came off mute. I have a couple questions I was gonna ask you guys asked already, so I'm good with all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palmizzano. We'll move next to Mr. Gregg.
My question's for Ted, I think. Ted, if the, if the deck was being requested and this was not a multifamily dwelling, would this deck need a variance?
Um, yeah, for lot, for, well, let me see, for building coverage, that's existing. Now, the only thing, yeah, I have a question. On my sheet here, it shows impervious coverage, existing 59, permitted 55, proposed 59. How can you add a deck and not increase your lot coverage?
Well, the, currently, the deck is, the area where the deck is going is cement right now. So they, they would have to cut through this, cut through the cement to pull the footings, and then, you know, then they could put the deck.
So it's got to be cement under the deck?
Well, yeah, there's already cement under the deck.
Okay.
Was that it, Ted?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thanks, and Mr. Gregg?
Let me ask the Rineery, the, the concrete that is gonna be underneath the deck, is that the same dimension, 7 by 10?
Well, it's existing, the, the whole backyard, you know, the whole backyard where the deck is going in that area is cement.
So it's, it's, it's at least 7 by 10 or greater?
It's greater.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for you.
And I have no questions, all my questions were answered. Did anybody else on the board wanna come back to this? All right, with none, we will open it up to public comment, public questions, and April, do you wanna run that section?
Sure, if anyone from the public wants to comment on this application, click the raise hand button on your screen, and I will allow you to speak, just state your name and address before you do.
April, just read your email one more time, so if people have an issue.
Looks like we don't have anyone.
I'd like to speak, April, if I may.
Just a minute, Mark, we'll get you.
Are you there? Looks like my internet might have got a little messed up. Is everybody there?
We're here, April. Last thing we heard you say was that there was no one from the public raising their hand.
Okay, that's the last thing I said.
Okay, and Mr. Fitzgerald raised his hand, and I, I believe he wants to speak as a member of the public.
Okay.
And I have an abundance of caution, Mr. Fitzgerald, would you, would you mind if we swear you in?
I will.
As a member of the public, good evening, and this is some of a unique experience, but as a member of the public, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to best of your knowledge to help you guide?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Let the record reflect that the witness was sworn, and before I hear whether you're speaking for the application or against the application, we just say, as we said at a recent meeting, because you are good enough to volunteer your time and serve as an appointed official of this board, that doesn't mean you lose your rights to publicly endorse or publicly criticize or publicly question comments. And so the rule of thumb is that we, as a board, can't treat you any better, any worse. And so again, that backdrop, sorry for interfering with your lingo, and proceed.
Good evening, board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak up on behalf of Matt, Matt and Mary Ann's application tonight. My wife and I own the property that is, abuts the actual rear of their property, so if you look over, you know, you can see into their backyard and where this deck is gonna go. I do wanna say, it's a very conservative-sized deck, it's very modest in only going 7 by 10. I can tell you, they've been wonderful neighbors and landlords since they moved in in 1999, and, you know, it's, it's, it's great to see you guys in front of the board. It's unfortunate you had to go through the expense for such a minor ask that you're having, but because you trigger a variance, it's necessary, but I just wanted to say to the board and to the public that, that, you know, these have been great Belmar residents and have taken care of their property and have done a beautiful job, and I'm sure the deck's gonna come out the same way.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. April, was there anyone else from the public?
No.
Okay, with that, we will close the public portion and go back to board comment. Back to you, Mr. Malango.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I agree with Mark, it's a conservative-sized deck, it's gonna be maintenance-free. I think there's gonna be benefit to having another means of egress from the building, and I would say I'm in favor of this application at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Malango. Mr. Ross?
Yes, I echo everything that Mr. Malango just said. I couldn't say it any better, so I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Palmizzano?
Yes, I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Gregg?
I too am in favor of the application.
And I too am in favor of the application, and I don't think I could add anything more than what's already been said, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on, it's not approved yet. I'm jumping, I'm jumping the gun here. Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Sure, I mean, I think
I have one question, John. John, I got a question for Kevin.
Go ahead, Ted, I'm sorry.
Kevin, the application that was submitted to me had 34% lot coverage and proposed 34%. The, the architect's drawing here has 59%, and 59% no change. So the application that was submitted is, is 20-some percent off. So it's actually, it's over on lot coverage, the way it stands right now. Should I have, should this application be corrected?
Yeah, now, so either way, the lot coverage is not being increased, it's staying whatever it is?
Yeah, it's existing, you know, it's an existing, non-conforming.
I absolutely think the, the record would reflect that as, if the application is approved as a condition, we either revise the plans, or, I'm sorry, revise the application materials, or put a note in the file to confirm, so to avoid any confusion, that the lot coverage is now 59% and will stay 59%, and we just eliminate any confusion when people in the future are looking at this. I think that's an excellent catch, Ted.
Okay, good enough.
And then, Mr. Chairman, the only conditions, standard conditions would be, to my understanding, would be, to Mr. Malango's point, we're just gonna confirm that, you know, it is a 7 foot by 10 foot deck, and then we talked about the lot coverage that we just talked about, commitment with the promises and commitments and representations, the development team made tonight, compliance with prevailing building and construction code regulations, we usually have a 24-month timeframe within which, you know, permits and CFOs, if necessary, issued, grading and drainage details to work out to the satisfaction of the board engineer, if necessary, something like this might be waived, but that, that's for, you know, the borough people that call, not, not, not me. I think we're sort of saying I think we're sort of saying no roof as a condition, because that would change the coverage if it did get covered, I think, right, Ted?
Yes, it would. Change the building, change the building coverage.
Okay, and so, Mr. Chairman, I think that was it. If that's acceptable, we can have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can I have a motion to approve the application, as summarized by Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Greg, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Palmisano?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Malengo?
Yes.
And Mr. Lisco?
Yes. Now I get to say congratulations, your application was approved.
All right, thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
All right, April, do you want to check in with Louis Mandia and see if his team is ready?
It looks like they are. I saw his architect come in.
Terrific, all right. So why don't you bring up that first application for Louis Mandia at 1708 B Street? We're just waiting on Lou Mandia at this point, is that right?
Well, he was just there.
Hey, guys, can everyone hear and see me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Is your whole team ready, Lou? Everyone on my, yep, yep, Nicholas Gonchar is on, as well as my architect as well. Thank you. Okay, so let me just do a couple real quick, Mr. Chairman, with your consent, we'll just do a real couple of quick procedural things.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, so first up, you'll recall, we started the proceedings on June 25th, and there was a little bit of a noticing quirk. What the quirk turned out to be was the applicant didn't realize and wasn't told that because the property is within 200 feet of Lake Como, I had to get a list from them as well. So he got a list and re-served the people who are not on, who are on the Lake Como list. So towards that end, if I could just ask if there's anyone out there in the listening public who have any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency or the notice that they received, about, just about the notice. And April, just read your email address one more time.
It's clerk@belmar.com. And Kevin, I do have someone from the public that's raising their hand.
Okay.
If you want me to just see what they want, one second.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead. R. Pilar, did you have a question?
They are on mute.
Yeah. You have to unmute yourself?
Yes, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, my name is Jerry Lochavo. I'm at 318th Avenue, I'm across the street.
I'm sorry. Hi, this is Kevin Kennedy, I'm sorry. It's coming up as R. Pilar. What is your name?
That's my wife.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so we just need your name and address for the record?
Yeah. My name is Gerald, G-E-R-A-L-D, Lochavo, L-O-S-C-H-I-A-V-O.
Okay.
I'm at 318th Avenue. I'm on the corner of 18th and B Street.
Okay. Did you have a question regarding the notice?
I did not receive the notice.
Okay.
Across the street.
Okay.
Thought it'd be worthy of mentioning.
Well, thank you. April, do you have access to your property owners' list?
For one second.
I'll pull it up as well, April. Thanks.
Yes, they are on the Lake Como.
Yep. I see the same right here on the first batch.
Lou, do you, or you're trying, do you have... I'm sorry? So, yeah, I think the connection, the connection got pulled off, sorry about that. Sorry, what was that, Kevin? I'm sorry. So they are on the list. Did you by any chance have a green or white card for them? Yeah, I'll look in this batch I have right in front of me, and then if not, I could pull up the other batch from my last month as well.
I have the white slip in front of me, if that helps.
Can you look up the tracking number on that?
Yeah, if you have all the whites up here, everyone.
Yes. I have the tracking number on it as well.
Lochavo, right?
Lou, on the white sheet, it's on the Gerard.
It's on the Gerard, okay.
I can also provide that tracking number if you would like.
I mean, do you have, Nick, do you have some type of documentation that shows it was sent to that address?
I could surely put in the tracking number on the USPS website. I could tell you the status of it. So I am looking at the tracking on it. It's still, it actually says it's supposed to be delivered today, actually, by 6:15, so it wasn't officially delivered yet, from what I'm looking, tracking.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Chairman, we have a little bit, so here's the situation. So as you know, obviously, the noticing is very important, and the notice is jurisdictional. But that means if we can't prove that notice was done correctly, we, as a board, don't even have jurisdiction to proceed. So typically, it doesn't, the standard is not whether the neighbor or the person received the notice. The only, the thing is, the law requires that it be sent to the correct address, and that there be some type of proof that it be sent to the correct address. Now, typically, we would see a white certified receipt saying, hey, this was mailed on such-and-such a date, and it was sent to Gerald Lochavo at whatever the address is. And I think that there was a little bit of an issue with, as I spoke to Mr. Gonchar earlier today, I don't think he has the stamped white slip, which is what we would typically see for the proof. So I think, Nick, we're going to have to get some type of, now, it's a good thing that Mr. Lochavo is here participating, but you are going to have to, with proceeding, get some type of confirmation that he was served at the right address. Sorry, Kevin, so really quick, I have the official receipt that this was, in fact, mailed out to Mr. Lochavo right here in front of me. All right, but now, all right, so the problem is, and I say this respectfully, is typically, when people give me that, or give that white slip to April, they have a stamp there from the post office saying what date it was stamped and sent, and they also usually say it went to Gerald Lochavo at, you know, 123 Main Street. Do you have some? Because that does not appear to have that, at least on that one that I'm looking at. And I'll tell you what, last month, when I sent the, because I had originally dropped these off last month for the first batch of the 200-foot list for just the Belmar applicants for last month's hearing, and I remember, you are right, there was a, there was a black stamp on each of these pay stubs, on each of these returned stubs, you're right, yep. I don't know, Nick, is there any reason why whoever returned these to you never stamped them? Like, there's not a stamp on any of these. And there's even a space for it.
Right, I spoke with Mr. Kennedy earlier today. I actually went back to the postal service place where I went to mail these out personally, and they explained to me that they don't know why it wasn't stamped. However, I did provide proof of my receipt. I also received a printout of the certified mail return receipt posted detail, which outlines that I did send them out on that day. And along with that, I also have a certified, a notarized variance certification, again, which was notarized, which, you know, from Lake Como, which states that I personally, Nicholas Gonchar, sent my certified mail return receipt, notice of a variance on the attached list of property owners, which, again, Mr. Lochavo was attached to it. And I have this slip with the tracking number, which I just looked up for everyone.
But just so I know, what does that, because I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but I also, we have to make sure notice is correct, particularly now that there's been a, I don't want to say a complaint, but an inquiry from the public. Do you have, I mean, normally, that white slip shows that who was served and when they were served, or when it was mailed, and that it went to the right address. And that's all, Mr. Chairman, we typically, as a board, I don't want to say care about, but legally requires that it be sent timely and it be sent to the right place. Whether or not the person gets it, the law doesn't say that we have to concern ourselves with that, but we do have to make sure that it was timely sent and it was sent to the right place. So, Nick, based upon the comments and the questions from Mr. Lochavo, do you have something that shows it was sent to that address? And, I mean, what does that, I'm not that familiar with the UPS tracking system, what does that tracking system show?
Right, so on the tracking system, again, it says out for delivery expected by 6:15 tonight, and it doesn't say the full address, it does say Belmont, New Jersey, 07719. Again, I understand it was not timestamped, but I do have a notarized letters, you know, and the receipt with it, along with a tracking number, showing that I did put it out. I know the individual is not stamped, but I do have, again, a printout from the post office which shows I paid for 18 certified mail return fees on July 12. You know, other than that, I don't have a timestamp. I'm not going to sit here and look at the board, but I do have other forms of proof, and as you know, a notarized letter is also, you know, testified in the road, which I'm here in front of everyone today doing as well.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate your comments, and I certainly believe, and I'm not looking to question your integrity or anything like that, but it's typically, we see a white slip, and we sort of say, hey, he sent it here, and it was sent to the right address, and it was timely, and that's all we sort of have to do. So now, a little, just because there is this question, I'm a little, you know, we're a little stymied here because we can't, if we had the white slip and we could show that to Mr. Lochavo, we'd say, hey, sorry, we didn't get it, but that's not within our control, but we at least sent it the right spot. So we're in a little bit of a rock and a hard place. Let me just, April, is there anyone else from the public who's asking any questions?
No.
Hey, Kevin? Yes. I mean, I think of a mixture of what my attorney mentioned, as well as having, like, I agree that there, these definitely shouldn't have been stamped with a timestamp, just to know that it was out for delivery in a timely manner. But I do have the receipt that we did, in fact, send it to Mr. Lochavo. But what is that receipt? I mean, what is that receipt? Does it show that it went to that particular address? It shows, yeah, exactly, it shows that this was sent, that we sent this out to that address, not necessarily, of course, that Mr. Lochavo actually received it, or it was delivered there, but it shows that we did attempt to send it there to him. Okay, so what, show me that, because that, that, that's, what, I just didn't fully understand. What document do you have that shows it went to? Yep, for this one right here. So the, so the small sheet, so this sheet right here in front of me. Right? Right? If you look at this number, the tracking number, that's going to align with the tracking number with, and obviously, it says Gerald on it, that tracking number aligns with the tracking number for Mr. Lochavo, where it was actually sent, but normally, right here, right, on the stub. You are right, like, on my last, if I pull out the other, well, I actually don't have the other stubs from last month, but they usually stamp it in certified here with the timestamp to show that it was sent. Right, and then on top of that, it usually says something more than just Gerald. It would say Gerald Lochavo, and it would have his address. So they didn't do that on, so I even have last month's, the last month's cards as well, and they didn't do that either. They just put, like, the person's first name on it. That's the green card. Do you have your white slips from the last time?
White slips you would fill out.
Right, April, April would have, April would have these from last time, because I dropped them off last month to her. But I think, April, the ones that we looked at last time did have the date stamp and did have the person's name and address.
Correct.
Yeah, see, even on like all of these, they don't have, they don't show the last, the last name on any of them. I know, but I think that's not, that's not the postal doing, that's, I said this respectfully, that's your doing.
Right. No, you're right. When I was at the post office, I wrote down the specific name, so, you know, I knew which one corresponds, and the tracking number corresponds with the certified mail receipt sent out. Again, you know, they were not stamped. I can't say why.
Mr. Chairman, are you, I'm sorry.
I'm on, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, you know, we've got a little bit of an issue here, particularly because there is a public inquiry on the subject, and normally, we never guess. And whatever I'm saying, I recognize that Mr. Mandia has been very, very patient with us, so I don't want to compromise any of that. But usually, we don't have a guessing game, or we don't have to hope. We generally say, here's the proof that everyone got served, and they got served timely, and we don't have to, and I would even go so far as to accept the tracking number if they could give proof that the tracking number shows Gerald Lochavo at one, whatever the particular address is. So I guess, Nick and... So I guess, Nick and Mr., and Lou, I mean, do you have anything that ties it being sent to Mr. LaShavo? Because here's my concern, and then I, like I said, I'm just doing the worst-case scenario, if notice is flawed, we don't have jurisdiction to proceed, if notice is flawed, we're not doing anybody any favors to get an application that's approved, and I'm not saying it's gonna be approved, but if it's approved, and then there's a noticed deficiency, that's easy grounds for any approval to be reversed. So we do have to, Mr. Chairman, unless, you know, you feel otherwise, and I don't wanna overstep my bounds, based upon the public inquiry, we do need to have this type of, some type of proof. Now, it is good that Mr. LaShavo is here, which helps, you know, address some of it, but I just, you know, I'm concerned about the public inquiry about this, and the lack of the white cards.
Mr. Kennedy, I'll weigh in, I mean, I would hate to put an applicant off for another month, or for however long it takes, but in my opinion, or in my opinion, the notice is done right, or it's not done right, and we move forward based on that, that's the first step. So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the notice was not done correctly, is that right?
I'm saying he can't prove that was done correctly. It might have been done 100% correctly, but he can't prove it, and that's normally what we jump on, and, you know, now that there's been a public inquiry that even takes it to, I mean, quite frankly, it's, that would have been a discussion point, even if there not been a public inquiry, because we always have to make sure the notice is correct. So it is an issue, particularly in the light of a public inquiry on this.
If I may respectfully say something, I know, right now, we may not have the green card returned, but, you know, I'm sure within the next couple of days, we'll start receiving all of them, I don't know why we haven't got them yet, but nonetheless, sorry.
Should I go check really, should I go check my mailbox really quick to see if I received any others today, since the last ones I checked was yesterday?
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, just for the record, and, Mr. Chairman, I agree with your assessment, the green card is not the real important issue, the white card, believe it or not, is, because we don't necessarily have an issue if people received it or not, or didn't sign for it, or the post office had an issue, all the law says is, we have to at least give the white cards to prove that it was sent, or hand-delivered to the person. Now, I'm just, like I said, and the green cards become handy, because if you have the green card, then we clearly know that the person got it, or whether or not, you know, they have the white slip or not, but, so, yeah, so, I don't know, Mr. Kennedy, I know you're in a tough position, but if we don't have proof that Mr. LaShavo was timely served, you know, we're gonna have an issue, I'd say, particularly in light of the public inquiry that has been made on the issue.
So, like I was trying to say before, you know, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anywhere in the rule specifically says proof has to be that these slips are timestamped, but, I mean, with conjunction with a receipt that shows I paid for 18, there's 18 addresses on this list that I received, I paid for 18 certified mail return receipts, the one specifically that we're speaking about right now, I have a tracking number that I just tracked in a matter of 30 seconds for everyone, I understand it doesn't specifically say, like, you're looking for a timestamp, and I also have a notarized letter that certifies that I sent this out to all parties, all 18 members on this list, all these addresses, I mean, I think it's unfair to say service was incorrect.
Oh, no, and I'm not saying that, that's a fair statement, I'm not saying service isn't correct, what I'm saying is, based upon what I'm looking at, is, I don't think you can prove that it was correct, and normally, what, just so you know, on the application that just left before us, on that last application, they submitted white slips, April went through each slip, and saw that they were served timely, and that they were sent to the right address, and that's how we know we have the correct, you know, proper jurisdiction. And, you know, based upon our conversations today, you know, I said, well, you know, look, let's try to make this work, but we're gonna need something, whether we have the green card, or whether we can trace, when I think I spoke to you today, I said, see if there's a way that if you call that, you know, tracking, the postal service, and see if they can track it, and show that it was being sent to XYZ at XYZ address. I certainly didn't say Mr. LaShavo's name, but I just, you know, so it is, it is an issue, and, you know, particularly in light of the public inquiry.
Right, so I don't wanna take any more time with the board, and, you know, keep being a dead horse, so to say.
Yeah.
You know, within the few seconds that Mr. LaShavo joined, you know, I located his address, I located the stub, and I looked up the tracking number all within a minute, perhaps, so, you know, I understand, maybe it's not to the T, but I still think, within all those, you know, within that minute or so, I was able to identify his address, his tracking number, track it, and let you know the status of it, but.
But again, I'm not trying to beat the dead horse, but you're saying you tracked it, did you track it to his address?
Well, I matched up his name on the receipt to the tracking number, I put it in, and it tracked it, and.
Does it, but does it say Belmar, or does it say his specific address?
Right, no, it says, it says, "Belmar, New Jersey, 07719."
But nothing that says his, that's, that's the, you know, respectfully, that's the issue. Like I said, I know what's riding here, and I, I don't bring this up, but, you know, we have a public inquiry on this, and, I mean, normally.
Kevin, respectfully, if I may butt in, I think the question's more pointed to Mr. LaShavo, would it be fair to say that if we had asked, if we asked Mr. LaShavo if we could proceed with me sending him the blueprint, and, I mean, not to get too peculiar here, but the notice is probably sitting in his mailbox, if not tomorrow, by tomorrow morning, the latest, right, given the information that my attorney mentioned, so I think, is it fair to say that if we ask him for us to proceed, and he, and he second, and he seconds this, that we could, we could go past this?
Well, I mean, there's a concern that we don't have the proof on any of the people, you know.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, April, did I cut somebody off?
No.
Oh, sorry. You know, like I said, I mean, the reality of it is, and I take no pleasure in this, because I know the angst that is here, but every application, we generally have to say, we have jurisdiction, or we don't have jurisdiction, and I generally say, for every application, the board secretary and I have reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, and what that means is that everything was timely, and everything was sent to the correct address, and I'm, I'm concerned, you know, particularly in light of the public inquiry, that, I just want, Kevin, just given the fact that, and respectfully, of course, I appreciate that, and it's understandable, I just wanna say, before, because I know last, last month, I didn't have the time to speak, but to be completely blunt with everyone here on the board, at this point, I'm bleeding out money, because I'm not only paying rent in New York City for me, my fiance, and my child that's on the way, but on top of it, I keep spending more money on the certified posts, these certified postage is notifying people, and now I'm about $700 in the hole there, and to be completely blunt with everyone here, I just wanna get the summer renters the heck out of my back house, and propose the plans, actually put something really nice there, that, that is the only thing I'd like to say. And you know what, and I'm gonna speak for everyone on the board, and I'm gonna overstep my bounds as lawyer for a matter, and if I overstep too much, my friend, the chairman's gonna mute me. I appreciate that, and I absolutely respect that, and I know that, and I can understand that, and what you said makes perfect, perfectly good sense, and the only thing that I would counter that is, I'm gonna, for purposes of this discussion, I'm gonna say, let's just say, you're gonna get a glowing endorsement and approval from the board, I have no idea that you are, but I'm not doing you any favor, if you were to get an approval from the board, and then, whether it be Mr. LaShavo, or any other individual of public, say, hey, he didn't, you know, he can't prove that it was properly serviced, and so then, if you're upset about the time and aggravation and cost you've spent thus far, I think, if you then have to go back and do it again, you're only gonna be even more upset with me.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, Mr. Chairman, I mean, am I, am I speaking out of line?
No, listen, nobody likes to see these things get delayed, but I think we've almost spent enough time on it tonight, it's either within our jurisdiction, or it's not, and everything I've heard is that it's not. I think at this point, we should be looking forward to the next step, and either picking a new day, adjourning, adjourning this hearing, and picking a new date, and, Mr. Kennedy, can you offer, or is there a way to help these guys get the notification right?
Yes.
Next time, so we don't have to deal with this again?
Yes, if, what I would suggest is, Lou, and again, Lou, you and Nicholas and I can speak tomorrow, what I would suggest is that we carry it to a date certain that you consent, we'll try to put you very close on top of the agenda, and we'll, the only people you're gonna have to notice, worst-case scenario, would be the Lake Como people, and the people who did not previously get noticed, so if we get, if you have the 14 people for the, from Lake Como, if you have 10 green cards that show they got it, then we just have to do the four.
Okay.
Like I said, I understand what's riding on this, I just, I think we're going down a rabbit hole, and I think I'm not doing you any favors, believe it or not, if we were to proceed.
I agree.
April, what, what type of, yeah, and Nick, and if you're okay with this, give me a call tomorrow, and we'll just, we'll hash it out, but, April, what type of, I know we can't put them on for Tuesday meeting, but what type of, can we put them on real quickly at the, at the next regular meeting?
Yes, it's August 27.
Okay, and could I be so bold as to, could we possibly put them up, number one?
Yes.
All right, so that's August 27?
Yep.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do is carry this to August 27, 2020, without the need for any further public notice, unless additional Lake Como people, we can't prove, so, worst-case scenario, you're gonna have to serve the Lake Como people again, unless they were properly served, so we're gonna carry this to August 27, 2020. April, is that a 6 o'clock meeting?
We have not advertised that one yet, so I recommend that we continue at 6 o'clock, if the board is okay with that.
Okay, so we should just note the time, 6 o'clock, and there will be no further public notice, except for the Lake Como people, if we have to, so if you're here tonight in the listening public, please come back, so to speak, on August 27, at 6 o'clock, and if some of your friends are not here tonight, but are interested, please, please let them know, and I guess we need, Nick, we just need, as a standard, your consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act on the matter.
Yes, I just, before, August 27, aside from next Tuesday, I heard there was a meeting, that's the next one following Tuesday's meeting?
Yeah, that's a special meeting, and I just don't know, my problem is, I would like to put you on there, but I just don't know if, if notice is required for any of these guys, you're gonna have to do 10 days, and it would not make the Tuesday.
Right, I would not say for Tuesday, I didn't know if there was one in between Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, no, that would be the next one.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the board on tonight with this minor, you know, minor issue, but, thank you, we'll see you on the 27.
Okay, hold on one second, April, and so you consent to extend the timeframe, Nick, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. April, what were you saying?
I do have one more member of the public raising their hand.
Okay.
Hold on. Go ahead, Claire.
Hi, Claire Hayner, 18th Avenue in Belmar, this is the second meeting that myself and several of my neighbors have sat in on and listened to, can I ask that prior to April 27, it's verified that all notices have been mailed, received, and we're ready to go, so we don't have to go through this again, please?
Yeah, that's a good, a good point, why don't, Claire, if you wouldn't mind emailing the, April, the board secretary, the day before the meeting, and we will make sure, Nick and Lou will get us the proofs ahead of time, because some of these proofs were just being discovered today, so we'll get that ahead of time, so that we'll make sure that there's no issues, and then on August 27, we'll hit the ground running, that's an excellent suggestion, Claire.
April, do you still have our old timestamp slips, so we could certify if, you know, Claire was one of the members that was, you know, mailed?
I don't think she's arguing about notice, she's just being, you know, just like you, like, hey, let's not do this again unless we're all ready to go, so I think, you know, I think, I think it's a fair point.
And I did receive notice.
All right, she did receive notice.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess we just make a motion to carry this to August 27, 2020, 6 o'clock PM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, I'll make that motion, and can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
On favor?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you next month.
All right.
Bye.
All right, let me get the next group up.
Hey, just by a show of hands on the camera from the board members, does anybody need a break, or are we gonna, can we roll right into this next one? All right, it looks like we're okay to keep rolling right into the next one. Our next application is Lori and Kevin Gildea at 208 7th Avenue.
All right, and, Mr. Chairman, as, in the good old days, I'd say, as the applicant, developers team comes forward, but I guess I really can't say that, and so I'll say, as the development team gets zoomed in, or brought up to panelist standard by, panelist standards by April, what we will do is, we will mark into the record what we, as a board, have before us, so A1 will be the development application dated April 30, 2020, and A2 will be the minor land use zoning permit dated November 25, 2019, slash, November 28, 2019, and that's got an addendum sheet to that, and A3 will be the floor plans and elevations prepared by Echo Architects LLC, and its last revised April 21, 2020, and it's consisting of, I think it's three, four pages, and what we're gonna do is, we're gonna swear, swear in Ted Bianchi, Ted, you are the zoning official and construction official of the great borough of Belmar, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, let the record reflect, Ted has been sworn, and I guess, let's say, is there anyone in the listening public who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? April, just read your email one more time.
clerk@belmar.com. And nobody has raised their hand.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it would be my respectful opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed.
That was easy, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, let's move forward.
All right.
And, Mr. Kennedy, I assume you wanna swear in the.
Sure, are they present, April?
Yes, we are, Kevin.
Oh, okay, all right, so, good evening, and if you could just state your name for the record?
James Albertus, A-L-B-U-R-T-U-S.
Okay, and you are the applicant's builder, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and your name?
Kevin Gildea.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Kevin Gildea, G-I-L-D-E-A.
I'm sorry, explain your last name again?
Gildea, G-I-L-D-E-A.
Okay, and you are the applicant?
Yes.
All right, good evening to both of you, and if you could both raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, and then, Mr. Gildea, if I could just start, just ask you a real couple, real quick, questions here, and let you turn over, we're talking about the property at 208 7th Avenue.
Uh, we're talking about the property at 208 Seventh Avenue, correct?
Yes.
And are you the owner of the property?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it, roughly?
Approximately a year and a half.
Okay, and is there a single-family home at the site?
Yes.
And do you live there?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you tell the board exactly it is, what you wanna, wanna do?
Uh, currently looking to put, I add a story and a half, um, on the second floor, we're looking to put, uh, two bedrooms, uh, and a bathroom, a- along with, um, additional storage space, and, uh, and a master bathroom.
And just, let me just, uh, right now, uh, how many bedrooms do you have now?
Two bedrooms.
On the second floor, how many bedrooms?
No, just in the whole house?
Oh, the whole house?
Right.
Three.
Three beds, three bedrooms. Okay, sorry.
Unless we swear you in. All right, so right now, there, there, Kevin, there are three bedrooms?
Okay, yes, three bedrooms.
And how, and right now, there's how many bathrooms?
Two.
Okay, so, uh, talk to the, the board, or, or have Mr. Albertus talk to the board about the addition that you want.
I'll, I'll address that. When it's my turn.
Okay.
Okay, um, and, and besides the, the second floor, we're looking to put, uh, an attic above it, for additional, um, storage space, uh, along with the balcony and a family room.
Okay. And what is it, you just need more living space at, at the property?
Uh, yes.
And just for the record, uh, did I see somewhere to suggest that, uh, you're, uh, building the addition over an existing structure?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I had for, um, I defer to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Albertus, did you want to talk about the project, or is that the end of your application?
Uh, no, we could, we could talk about the project, uh, you know, obviously, the good days, I haven't done this, but, um, the existing house is, is in Cape Cod, they got a family, they've been here for a while. Uh, the homes around them are two and a half story homes. So with them looking around and wanting to expand their, uh, their, uh, use of the property and the enjoyment of it, the plan you have in front of you obviously show a, uh, pretty nice home with porches, decks overlooking the, uh, the ocean and so forth. Uh, maybe the best thing I can do is start with the house plan, if that's all right with you, John?
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, so if we pull out the house plan, folks, the, uh, front elevation shows what we call the typical two and a half story home in Belmar, with a front porch, second floor deck, and a balcony off the half-story or the attic. The two sides of the house and the rear basically remain the same, except for the roof line for the added half-story or attic. Staying on the outside, the owners are going to use either a hardy board or vinyl cedar shake on the front of the house. They'll use a standard clapboard or double four siding on the other three sides. The decks are gonna be typical of the other decks we have in town that we do, the HBNG square rails with the vinyl, uh, structural reinforced, uh, I'm sorry, HBNG square columns with the vinyl reinforced metal, uh, railings, AZAC trim in between the, uh, the two stories, AZAC trim around the porches and decks, so it's all maintenance-free. Um, second floor and third floor, uh, deck or balcony gonna be fiberglass. First floor is going to be some type of composite or track. The roof is gonna be a new timberline roof. We are gonna have gutters. Uh, I can address the gutters and the downspouts when I'm going through the zoning, if that's okay with you, 'cause we always get into the drywells, and I have that on my zoning notes, if that's all right with you, Mr. Lisco.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. So the first floor has an existing living room, dining room, what Mrs. Gildea is actually using as an office, and a bedroom. It's on a full basement, has a new kitchen, and they remodeled this house, obviously with permits, as I'm in front of Ted, um, for the first floor. The second floor plan shows two bedrooms and of not large size, as well as a master bedroom with a master bath. When I spoke to the Gildeas, looking at the property, which we'll go over with zoning, I said, obviously, if you're gonna do this, you need to go straight up, and let's stay within the confines of what's here. So that and the architect hence developed this second floor plan. The half-story plan in the attic is a family room going out to what's called a deck, I call it a balcony, and it shows the, uh, which I'll go over in the zoning end of it. It shows the, uh, square footage of, uh, what the, uh, architect proposes for the attic or the half-story. Most of it, um, is actually under a roof line or under, behind a knee wall. And if you look at the attic plan, you can see that a lot of it is, um, it says family room. Um, it stays within the confines of what's allowed up there for square footage. That's the house plan in, uh, in general that you have in front of me, in front of you, I'm not sure if you have any questions before I get into the zoning end of it.
We'll hold our questions to the end, thank you, Mr. Albertus.
All right, let's get into that. Thank you, John. So the property is in the R50 zone. The lot size that you need is 5,000 square feet, and the existing is 3,259 square feet. There's a house in back of us, there's a house on the east or west, there's no other property to buy. The frontage we need is 50. It's 48.92. The depth, not that we have one, uh, is a requirement, but is 63 on one side and 70 on the other, just to show you the nature of the property. The front yard setback, we need 20. It's 12 to the house, and it's 4.5 to the porch. We do have a group of pictures here somewhere that, when I go over with you, will show that our house lines up with at least a house to the east, and several houses down to the west, which is that, um, triangle house that we, uh, got a variance to do some porches and decks on last year, uh, that's right on the property line. The distance to the sidewalk, which is always important, so I know Mr. Fitzgerald likes this stuff, on the porch is 12 feet. From the, um, to the curb is 23 feet. So the point is, existing, we're 12 to the house off the property line, we're 4.5 off the property line to the porch. But because of where the property line is, the distance to the sidewalk from the porch is 12 feet, the distance to the sidewalk from the house, is more than, is more than that, so, um, the numbers look bad, but they're existing, I just wanted to try and explain them to you. Um, the side yard setback, we need 15 total, we have 18.4, some which contains a driveway and a buffered area, and we have 2.1 on the east side. Uh, we understand, and it's on Ted's notes, that fire rating and other considerations have to be taken into when applying for the building permit. Just to let you know, the, um, neighbor's property to the east, even though we have a 2.1 foot setback, the neighbor's house to the east is 27 feet, and the reason for that is there's a double driveway to the east of our property. So we have to adhere to the rules for fire rating, I'm just informing the board of the distance to the neighbor's house in relationship to ours. Uh, rear yard setback, you need 35, the existing's 21, and it, that's what, uh, we're proposing. We're not gonna exceed any more than 35 feet in height. The floor ratio, we need 70%, it's 36.3 existing, it's 61.5 proposed. The building coverage is 30%. The existing is 37.2 for the house and 3.1 for the shed in the back. Uh, and that remains as-is. The impervious we need, we, uh, that's required, I'm sorry, is 55%.
Did you say you need an FAR variance?
Uh, floor variance, no, we do not.
Do not need a floor, thank you.
Sorry, good. Uh, the impervious coverage, 55%. Currently, it's 67.38, and of course, it's a lot percentage-wise, because of the size of, the, the nature of the lot. Uh, the proposal on the plan is 68.14. The difference is, since we're keeping everything existing, uh, we're removing a fireplace on the side of the house, but we're adding a second air conditioner in the back, so somehow that's what the surveyor came up with. So we're increasing the impervious by maybe a half a percent. The, uh, next issue is the parking, which is always an interesting uh, issue in town. Uh, I believe Ted, we need, and I apologize, three parking spots are required. We're proposing two. One of them is behind the front of the home, which is one of your requirements. The other one starts at the beginning of the home, runs down Mr. Gildea's property, and we are in, um, approximately three feet of the town right of way for that second parking spot, if you look on that survey. We're nowhere near the sidewalk, but we are in the town right of way. Um, when I get into some of my pictures, it's the same of just about any parking or driveway in Belmar, the right of way, the, where the, uh, property line is and where people park, they always park in the town right of way before they hit the curb. So, uh, we need the variance for the parking, 'cause we're only showing two on the plan. The, oh boy, the parking on the plan, just as an FYI, shows the driveway right on the property line. There's 13 feet from the Gildea's property line to the neighboring driveway. The distance in between is very, very nicely buffered by the neighbor. While we're on the zoning also, we always end up talking about roof drainage, runoff, and so forth, especially on a property like this, because the east side is actually all locked in by concrete. There's no grass buffer. So the gutters for the east side of the house have to come down the back of the house, as well as into the front of the house. And because of that setback, it's not on any plan, but being before the board, we're going to put in the drywell or the flow wells on the east side of this property to handle the roof runoff, based on the calculations we need, uh, for these flow wells. On the west side of the property, we have approximately eight or nine feet to the driveway, maybe a little less, we have room in the backyard. I think we have enough room to run the gutter runoff to dissipate within the ground. But if the board asks us for any kind of dry, drywell system on the, uh, the west side, we would certainly be amenable to it. Uh, I think, other than that, the one thing that, um, we, we have a possibility of doing, and I want to bring it up before the board, which might change the percentage, is if you're looking at the plot plan, you see the two cars parked in the driveway. And then you see some room from the back of the last car to the sidewalk, and you also see some room from the front of the front car to the shed. The distance from the shed to the, uh, sidewalk is 54 feet. We need 18 feet for a car spot. Um, I'm sorry, is, uh, it's not 54 feet, I'm sorry, John. Um, I believe it's 52 feet, so we're kinda, we're short of three spots, but in 52 feet, you can normally get three cars. If for some reason the Gildeas wanted to add a parking spot, I told them it would be wise to add it to this application. So we ran the driveway from the shed on the left to the property line, and also used the full depth of the right of way. Our impervious would increase from 68.14 to 72.74. So the, the advantage is, we got one more car off the street, and in this area, back and half to the beach, we know what parking is like in Belmar. I don't think the half percent or whatever it is on the impervious would make a difference. So I would like to at least include that into the application for the coverages, in case the Gildeas ever want to do it. Right now, they're...
68.14% to 72.74?
That's correct, thank you. So other than that, that's it.
Thanks, and, Mr. Albertus, just, just so I'm clear, you are now proposing that that, uh, that driveway is gonna extend to the back of the shed there, is that right?
I'm proposing that, we'd like to give the owners the okay to do so if they do it. We're going to leave this plan as it is, John, but if they want to expand it, use the remaining footage of the right of way, we would just like to be able to get that permission, which would change the impervious to 72.74%.
All right, I imagine you're gonna have some questions on that as we go forward. Uh, was that the end of your application?
I've got some pictures I just want to go through real quick, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
You should have them with you? I submitted three pictures with the application?
We have them, go ahead.
Okay, so picture number one.
Let's just, uh, mark them for the record, I think we'll start with, uh, what do we have to April, A5? All right, so, uh, Mr. Albertus, if you could just, uh, hold up, what, the first picture?
First picture is picture number, where the hell you, picture number one?
All right, so we're gonna mark that as A5, and what is that a picture of?
That's a picture of the front of the Gildea's house and the residence to the east, showing that they basically line up, that gets back to the front.
When was that picture taken?
That picture was taken
Roughly?
Six weeks ago.
And by whom?
By me.
Okay, thank you. And so now, this next picture is A6. And what is A6 a picture of?
That's picture two, that just shows the front of the Gildeas, and then a look down the east side of the street. Um, there's a two and a half story house next to the one next to us, uh, it just basically shows...
Six weeks ago?
Yes.
By you?
Yes.
All right.
It basically shows you the nature of the street and the size of the homes that are currently on the street.
And A7?
Picture three.
What is that a picture of?
I took that six weeks ago as well, and I'm the one that took it. It's the two homes to the west of us, and it shows that the driveway obviously goes to the, the curb. So some of the right of way is, uh, used for parking. It shows the sizes of the driveways, and of course, the need for parking in this area in relationship to closeness to the beach and so forth. And I think that's it, John. And I think that's it, John.
Thanks, Mr. Albertis. We'll roll right into board questions, starting with Mr. Malanga.
Hey, Jimmy. Hey, Kevin. I just have a couple of questions. The, in your presentation, you said you were not going to exceed 35 feet in height, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I see the plan that you're submitting is 31.6 in height. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so are we going to be 31.6 or you're going to balance between 31.6 and 35 feet?
And we're going to balance between that. We have to add the height of the foundation in there.
Other question, have you and Kevin discussed the matter of reducing the size of that shed to make those three spaces compliant?
That's entirely up to you. He'd prefer not to, how's that?
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. We'll go next to Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I guess I need some clarification on the request for the extended driveway. I, I thought the shed, I thought if you wanted to get the approval to extend the driveway, you would have to remove the shed. No, or am I mistaken where the shed is?
I brought that up only as a suggestion. We can just leave the plan as is. And then if the Gilde's wanted to come in for another parking spot, because I know they don't want to remove the shed. So if giving us the third spot means removing the shed, we'll just keep the plan as is.
Yeah, well, I guess just for clarification, you still aren't going to, you're still going to need a parking variance though, because I don't think.
I mean. We need it either way.
You're not going to have three spots even if we allow that because you're hanging over into the, yeah.
Absolutely.
So regardless.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, I would, I don't know, I get a little, I prefer probably not to grant an increase in impervious coverage unless you agree to remove that shed. Because I think if we allow the shed to remain and we increase the impervious coverage, it could be used elsewhere on the property. That would be my fear anyway. Like, I think the only way you would be able to extend that driveway is to remove that shed and then therefore it doesn't prove beneficial, so.
Okay, we're just going to leave it as is then.
I mean, I, I'm interested in other board members' comments. Like, I like the idea of an extra parking place and removing the shed. But if, if you're not going to remove the shed, then I would prefer to just keep the impervious as it is.
And Mr. Ross, could I just interrupt you here just while we're on this parking space issue? I have a question for Ted. It's, it's my understanding that if that parking space that they're showing is in the right of way, we can't actually allow that to be a parking spot, is that right? I mean, we don't have jurisdiction to give that space away.
No, you can't, you can't park in the right of way.
Okay, so, so to be clear, Mr. Albertis, I, I see what you're offering and I get the idea. But that second parking space that goes into the right of way is not going to be acceptable. So what's the total parking spaces required here?
We're required, I, we're required three.
And right now, you only have one.
We only have one. No, it's not, it's not legal.
Right, so, so, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but, but I would think you're asking for a variance for one parking space where three are required. Unless you're amending your application to remove that shed and put the second parking space back there, which I think you just indicated you didn't want to do.
No, so when I brought up the parking, I thought I indicated the need for variance either way. We only have one spot legally. So obviously, we need the variance for parking.
All right, that's what I thought I heard you say, thank you.
I, I have one question, Jimmy.
Hey, Ted.
The balcony on the third floor in the front, is that an addition, that's added on?
That balcony on the third floor front, Ted, because it's only a cave, is part of the new half story.
Okay, that's part of the new half. So now, now you're over top of the, of the deck on the first, so that's another, that's another variance. It's got to be, the first floor deck has to be open. And it's not. So now it's a variance for blocking that first floor deck.
So I'm sorry, Ted, what's the variance?
It's, it, it calls for the porches, the deck over the porch to be open. No roof over. And now they've got a deck on the third story that, that's over top of the second floor deck over the porch.
So what we have, John, is a, is a covering over the second floor deck with that balcony. So Ted is bringing up the fact that we need a variance to get permission for these porches as they're designed, which is similar to every other porch in the thing, but Ted's correct. We need a variance for it.
And you are asking for that variance at this point?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Ted, was that it for you right now?
Say it again, John.
That, that was all your questions right now?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. Excuse us, Mr. Ross, thanks for your patience there, go ahead.
No, that's all right. I guess, Ted, I guess I was always of the impression that that third floor balcony had, if it totally covered the second one, that was a problem. But it's just like a little tiny piece up there, is that, that still requires a variance?
Yeah, yeah, it has to be all open. It doesn't say anything about partially, it's got to be all open.
All right, I just, I feel like we see quite a few of those like that, but.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. So that was the main questions I had, John. I get, I guess one other question while we're on the shed, and I think I, it would just, I just need to throw it out there, I probably know what the answer is. But have you looked to relocate it anywhere else on the property, the shed, so that you could fit another parking spot there and still keep the shed?
He's talking to you, Kevin. You can look at him. We could, we could move it, it's not going to change the coverage. We have to meet, I think, the setbacks for it, but we might be able to put it in the back right of the property.
Well, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there because, you know, parking is a premium and, you know, two, two, you would then have two legal spots there instead of one for when you need three. And I, I think it just becomes a little more palatable. But I also am sensitive to you not wanting to consume your entire backyard with a shed too, so.
That's what, yeah. That's what Mrs. Gilde just brought up unofficially to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's your application, but I just wanted to kind of bring that up there and tickle that a little bit, so.
Yeah, I think they want to leave the yard, just keep the shed there.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, John.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. That brings us to Mr. Fitzgerald.
Hey, guys, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hope all's well. I'm going to try to just go through this as quickly as we can. I like reading Ted's notes because written handwritten notes are always a good guide for us. But before I do that, can I ask about this, this second spot? And, and John, that's very kind of you to say three required, only one allowed, and the variance would, would, would reflect that, right? So it kind of gets, it's kind of solves the problem for them. But I'd like to know that that second spot, even though we can't grant it and we would not permit it, because as a zoning board, we can't grant parking in what is considered a town right of way. It seems like that's going to become a usable spot to park a car. Is that true, Jim or, or Mr. Gilde?
It has to be, you can't get to the parking, you can't get to the driveway without there. And quite candidly, everybody parks in the right of way in this town.
I'm just saying, the way you're showing it, even though technically it's not a parking spot and, and we can't approve it as, we can't count it as a parking spot, the practical use of it is you would be able to use it as you've reflected on the diagram, is that correct?
That's correct.
Excellent, okay, good to know. Okay, um, so, so Ted, you know, said the front right side and rear yard setbacks had some issues in his, in his write-up. Aren't these existing conditions, like, it's my understanding that you're putting on a second floor, so the first floor footprint is not changing, is that correct?
That's correct, we're just going straight up with what we got.
Right, so, so that condition, it, it's, it's current. And what we're doing is saying we're recognizing that it's current. So Ted, that's your understanding, right? When you, when you wrote it about the setbacks, that there was no additional beyond what there currently exists that being asked for in that regard, right?
Oh, yeah, it, it's in the setback right now. So they're intensifying.
They're going up.
Yeah, they're going up, they're still, they're building in the setback.
Okay, all right, great, okay. And then you asked that an elevation drawing be provided because you, you said 12-foot finished floor elevation. It's in a flood zone, substantial improvement, meet FEMA regulation. Do we know what FEMA regulations apply in this case?
Well, I think I asked for Christine Bell to review this. Did she get this, April?
I believe so. Yeah, I believe so.
She did, okay. I have to make a determination as to the cost of this construction, and it's not more than 50% of the value of the structure. If it is, they have to meet FEMA. And if they have a basement, it's got to be filled in. You know, they got to have flood vents, the whole nine yards. You're, you're aware of that, right, Jim?
Yeah, so I did speak to Mrs. Bell, Ms. Bell. The, as well as Chuck, I believe, probably Ted. And no, no, Ted, you told me over to Ms. Bell, or April did. We can do 50% of the assessed value of the house at one time.
Correct.
The assessed, the assessed values, I'd say $100,000, it's close to that, just of the house. So we can do $50,000 worth of work. We have to close that permit out, according to Ms. Bell. Once we close that permit out, we can apply for another $50,000 worth of work with new permits. It has to be done in increments, according to Ms. Bell, to get to house. So we're going to go through three or four increments of $50,000 to get this house the way you see it on the plans. And that was.
Right. Jimmy, is there, is there a time limit between permits?
Ted, I think Chris said that as soon as you close out one, you can apply for the other one.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, we've had a, we had an application in the past, similar issue. But if you get the assessed value of the structure, like what the current rate would be, because the town assessment for structures is typically significantly lower than the actual value of the structures. So if you're going off the assessed value, you may have a, a, a low number that's triggering the 50%. So I think we had a conversation about that. And Mr. Kennedy, you'd have to advise, but I think we said a real, an appraisal of the value of the structure would suffice in terms of getting to that 50% calculation.
When talking to Christine Bell, Mark, the assessed value of this house, which shows you why they want to do work to it, is about $102,000. So it really only gives you under the rules, $50,000 worth of work.
We had a prior application where that topic came up, and I'm asking Mr. Kennedy, if the assessed, is it, is it the tax assessed value? Or is it, is it the, the market value of the structure?
I'm sorry, don't you ask me.
No, I'm asking Mr. Kennedy.
I believe it's the assessed value, but I, you know, I would, I would have to check with Christine Bell.
Well, I think getting an answer on that might save you some troubles, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Another thing that Ted said was lot coverage, building coverage, calculations broken down, gravel driveway counts towards impervious coverage. Ted, are you satisfied that the revised numbers are, are now good?
Well, yeah, the, the numbers, the numbers that, that were submitted on this application were 55% of lot coverage. And actually, it turned out to be 68%. So it doesn't correlate with the application that was submitted. It, it shows 68 on the plan, on the architectural drawing. On, on the application, it only has 55, 55%. So there's a big difference here, you know, that's why I wrote the note there.
I mean, I can tell you, other boards might not let those numbers to be amended on the fly like we do. But, but, you know, Jim, you know, I just think, or Mr. Kennedy, I just want to make sure that we have the correct numbers when we validate this application.
Absolutely.
amended.
Just so you, just so we're, just so we're clear.
Right.
Okay, just so we're clear, because I don't make those mistakes. Mr. Gilde applied for the zoning permit for this, which the wrong numbers were put on. I came in after the fact and I got involved with the real numbers. But that's how that came about, Mark, I didn't apply for the zoning permit.
Sounds like we got to get it right, so whatever, I don't know what it, what wrong, but let's just get them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how that happened.
Ted also.
If I could just jump in, what, what is, Mr. Albertis, what is the number?
For the impervious coverage?
Yeah.
68.14%.
Okay, thank you.
Ted asked, will it be habitable area on this, on the half story?
Say it again, Mark?
Is the half story going to be habitable?
Correct, I didn't, it wasn't indicated on the application, you know, that's why I asked that. Jimmy, did you submit me, to me, the, the correct half story definition?
Yes.
40% at five feet?
Yeah, so on the plan, we have 317 square feet of space up there. And the architect listed it at 39% of the attic area is 317 square feet.
Okay, it has to be at least, the, the area at five feet or less has to be at least 40% of the floor below.
That's correct, so it's, it's 61%.
Okay, so you're at 61%?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, great. And then you mentioned that openings are not permitted on the east side of structure, building code requirement for fire rating.
Correct, you can't, you can't put windows within three foot of the property line. No windows.
Is that satisfied on, on the design or is it not?
Well, it's kind of.
So on the design, Ted, those windows are existing. They could be tempered glass, and I saw your note. Are they allowed to stay as existing, there's no new?
Well, existing, existing can stay, Jimmy, but the third story is not existing, correct?
Yeah, yeah, there's no windows on the third story on the east side setback.
And believe me, you're not going to find a window that's fire rated. I can tell you right now.
All right, so those windows are existing that you see on the plan facing east. And there's no window in the half story that's proposed.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, long, if it's existing, you can leave it.
It's on the architect's plan here somewhere.
Okay, and then Ted, you said the maximum width of the driveway is 10 feet. So Jimmy, what, what, what's the, the parking space width that we're talking about here?
Looking at it, Mark, with the scale rule, it's 10 feet.
All right, great, okay. And then you mentioned the mechanical equipment, and I don't have the drawing unfolded in front of me right now, but I think I saw it on there. The mechanical equipment is, is on the plan and, and not within a setback?
Yes, it is.
I think it shows at the rear of the house now, right, Jimmy?
Yes, it does.
All right, great. Nice job on writing that up, Ted.
I'd be lost without them.
It's always a challenge with Jimmy.
I'd be lost without you, Ted.
Is that it, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah, that's it, I said so, yeah.
Oh, thank you very much. All right, next up is Mr. Palmasano.
I'm listening to everything you guys said, I think you have all my questions covered.
Thank you, Mr. Palmasano, that brings us to Mr. Greig.
Couple little things, we already approached the mechanicals that they're to the rear of the house, but are they within or within the limits, within, you know, outside of five feet from the property line? I, I can't really tell from the print.
Yes, they are.
Okay, and I thought you had said something about the driveway being too close to the neighbors. Is there something about that?
Well, we normally like to provide a buffer, there's a slight buffer there. But in case it was brought up, I just brought it to your attention that we were 14, 15 feet to the neighbor's driveway to the west. So looking at the plot plan that the surveyor did, it appears that the parking is almost on a property line, there's a slight buffer. We normally like to use a one-foot buffer when we're doing homes. Neighbor's property to the west is 14 or 15 feet before they even hit their driveway, and it's very well manicured. So I just brought it up as an FYI.
It's immaterial how far away their, their driveway is, is yours within one foot of the property line.
I'm looking at the plot plan, Teddy, we normally want to see one feet, do we not?
Yes, that's the ordinance, one foot.
Yeah. So if I'm looking at the driveway and the, and the, and the the survey, I haven't worked with the surveyor, but there is a decent gap between the driveway and the property line. And the scale is one inch equals 10 feet. So we have two choices here. I will make sure there's one foot of buffer if we have to move the driveway over. I will make sure there's one foot of buffer. If we have to move the driveway over a foot, we got plenty of room. It's 18 feet from the house to the property line.
Well, it's supposed to be a foot. It's got to be a foot. That's where I look at it.
Okay, so we'll make it a foot.
And is there anything that we can do with the shed? Reduce the size of it? Do you need the, I don't know how big it is. It's, uh, it's unclear here that I, what I can see is the size of the shed?
Uh, it's on the, uh, it's on the breakdown. The shed is, uh, decent. 10 by 10, 100 square feet.
Can that, that shed be reduced adequately to give you that second parking place? I'd like to see you have two parking places, legal legitimate parking places, not using up the right of way.
That's a question for the owner.
Okay.
So they would prefer not to, which means they'd have to move it in the back right corner of the property, again, meeting the setbacks. Um, possibly we can move the parking spot closer to the shed, move this up three or four feet, move the parking spot. We'll move the two parking spots closest to the shed and stay out of the right of way.
All right, that gives you two legitimate legal parking places off the road. Is that correct?
It gives us two parking spots, but by the town ordinance, I'm only getting credit for one because the other one doesn't hit the front of the house yet.
And you can't move it that far?
No, of course. We run into this on every parking spot, you know, parking thing in Belmar for an application.
Parking has become quite an issue in town and I would really like to see you do something, whatever it is, make up your mind with. If, if this was a stipulation of the, the, of my approving it, um, I would like to see you do something with the shed. I don't know, is it a wooden shed?
Yes, it is.
Can it be reduced in size enough so that you can get two parking places, please?
If we move the parking spots up towards the shed, we'll have two legal spots and not hit the right of way.
Not using the right of way?
That's correct.
And you're willing to do that?
Yes, we are.
Make that a stipulation.
Yes, we will.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, uh, we just make sure we note that as a condition of the application.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can I also add that you said it's your intention to, to, um, do three, uh, three or possibly four permits for this job so that you can circumvent the rule, the, the flood zone rule? Is that what your intention is?
Uh, that's, well, that's the intention and that is the rule that Christine Bell gave us. I think we got to keep in mind here, folks, we got a story and a half Cape Cod. Um, the owners just want to go straight up and keep the existing footprint. That's what the, um, engineer Christine Bell explained to me how the process had to go.
And Ted, as far as you know, that's not going to interfere with, uh, anything with FEMA and quote, give us a bad rating?
Um, it, it, it won't affect the flood insurance. I mean, because he, he's meeting the requirements, so he's not going to have to comply with the FEMA regulations.
So, so FEMA is not going to, uh, create a problem for, so this situation is not going to create a problem for us with FEMA for the town?
No, he's just going to pay more flood insurance, a lot more.
And when he, um, comes back for another permit, does he have to come before us again?
Well, not, not for that. Unless it's something that's non-conforming, he would have to come back.
Okay, so he can apply for a second, third and fourth?
Yeah, that's a good question, Phil. Uh, Jimmy, is, so we're going to go through this so you're not exceeding the, uh, the 50% rule. Um, so, so at what point are you going to cut this off to meet that?
I think we need three true applications of $50,000 worth of work, three permit applications.
So how, and you're going to be able to complete the job of the, the $50,000?
Times three.
Everything's going to be closed in and habitable? I mean, how much of the house are you going to get done?
Um, I'm, I'm talking to the owners because I wrote down three or four. We already have the first floor. It's already been remodeled. So we're doing the second floor and the attic. Um, so it could be four $50,000. We're doing maybe 1,500 square feet of worth of real work. It could be four $50,000 increments of work, a couple hundred thousand.
So you're going to put a second story and an attic on for 50 grand?
Times four, Ted. I have to do four permits.
Yeah, but how are you going to close each one of these out?
When we apply for the permit, and again, I went over this with, uh, Chris, just so you know, I was trying to figure that out myself. She said, put on the permit the work that you're going to get done and close that out. So if we're doing framing, but not shee rock, but not rough electric, that's how she was explaining to me how to try and make this work under these conditions.
All right, you, you're going to have to deal with Chuck on some of this, you know?
Yeah.
Um, this is the first time this has happened. I can tell you that.
It's, it's unusual. You're right. Thank God the houses of, the finished floor is above the base flood elevation. So it's not the only area we got room for.
Okay.
Honestly, um, I don't like the idea of doing $200,000 worth of work on a $100,000 house as you declared it, uh, and saying that it's less than 50% of the value of the house. Somehow it just doesn't sit right with me.
I'm, I'm sorry. Say that again?
You, you're telling us, I believe, your intention is to do $200,000 worth of construction work on a $100,000 house as you declared it. And that is less, the 200,000 is less than 50% of the 100. That's what you're saying.
The house is assessed at $100,000. We are allowed to do $50,000 worth of work at a time to do these plans. According to the borough engineer, we have to come in with applications for $50,000 worth of work and no more to stay within those rules. So we may have to come in with four separate $50,000 building permit applications. And I think if we have a call between myself, Christine and, and Ted, don't shoot the messenger. I'm only going by what Ms. Bell told me and that got us to this point.
Okay, um, I have a question for Kevin, please.
Yeah.
Um, what do you see here? Well, I, it just doesn't sit right somehow and I'm not sure if I'm right or wrong.
Yeah, no, no. And it, it's a complicated situation. So there's, there's, uh, a couple ways to handle it. Uh, either one, you could say, if, you know, you could say, hey, uh, why don't you have Christine review it and, uh, you know, we'll carry this when we're all done and get Christine's review and approval, uh, just so that you know before you approve it, that you have Christine's, uh, as floodplain manager or borough engineer, you've got her endorsement. Or I guess if it, uh, there's a theory that says if, if you were going to approve it, you could prove it subject to that. Um, uh, but if you have any questions and you want the answers first, we, uh, have Christine, uh, you know, we, when we're done tonight, we carry it and, uh, we get Christine's, uh, the ability for, you know, her to come to the next meeting or write a letter explaining it. Because it's, it, it does, it seems a little, you, on some level, you would like to think that it shouldn't work that way, that you could just break it up into, you know, one, two, three, four, and then defeat, uh, the purpose. But I, I don't know enough about the, uh, the complicated FEMA regulations and I would totally defer to Christine on that.
Okay, um, along that lines then, I personally don't want to vote on this until we know where we stand. We voted on things in, in the way in the past where we're, it was things were a little unclear, maybe a drawing or something was a little unclear. And too frequently it bites us. And I'm just personally not willing to vote on it until we know where we stand on it.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm more than satisfied with that because again, don't shoot the messenger. I just brought the information from the Christine Bell once I saw what was going on here. And, uh, this is what she, uh, told me was allowed. And she says it's not allowed in some of the towns she works in, but in Belmar it was.
I, I have one, one question. Uh, I just talked to another floodplain administrator. He, he tells me that that's not the intent of that FEMA regulation, to do this this way. It's not the intent. This is a backdoor deal that shouldn't be allowed. Bottom line, Jimmy, you know, how are you going to close out $50,000 worth of work on that second story and make, make it code compliant? How are you going to do that?
Folks, I came in here after the fact.
No, I know, Jim. I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm bringing up.
Ted, I'm only telling you what Christine told me I had to do to make it work.
Okay, all right. It, it, that's not the intent of the code. That's all I can say.
I, I explained that to her. She said, Belmar has it. I can't argue with it.
John, I'd like to be recognized, if you don't mind.
Ted, was there anything else?
No, that's it. I'm done.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Greig, were you, were we all through?
I'm through.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I, 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 Jim, I'm sorry to say this, but I support Ted. I, 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 I support Phil's comments 100%. Um, I, I was in a similar situation with the house that I purchased next door and it was the cumulative value, value, and it wasn't even variances. It was just permits. It was the cumulative, um, value of the permits against the, the value of the house when the work began. Um, it, it, it wasn't viewed as separate transactions. So I, I either think Christine is either, either stated the wrong way or maybe mistaken. But also it is the intent of the law and it does appear that by chopping this into that, we'd be setting dangerous precedent to be going against the intent of the law to try to accommodate, you know, incremental buildings such as this. So, um, I'm with Phil. I, I honestly couldn't vote until we get legal clarification on how that 50% calculation is done and what's allowed and what isn't allowed. Because I'm afraid it might be not legal to do it the way it's being suggested.
Mark, I have no problem with it. And, and John, we can carry it over. I just want to clarify that when I was first brought aboard and then I was instructed to talk to Christine Bell about this and April was nice enough to make the contact, this is what was explained to me. And she even said, it's one of the few towns that allows it, but that was the increments of which, um, the work was allowed to, uh, progress. So with that said, why don't we just carry it over if we can, Mr. Lisco? Um, obviously I see Ted enough. We can set up a meeting with Christine Bell or we can have a conference call. What else, Ted? He's over there now. Uh, we can have a conference call and why don't we clarify it, Ted? And then this way it, it takes everything off the table for now. If that's okay with you, Ted.
Yeah, no, that's fine, Jim.
Why don't we do that, Mr. Lisco? We'll carry it over?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Let's, um, let's just make sure we finish up some of these portions of this meeting if we can, uh, while we're at it. Um, I had, you had no other questions at this point?
I have no questions.
Okay, I had no further questions, uh, at this time. Did anybody else on the board have anything else, uh, seeing the way this is going to go? Did you have any other questions you wanted to ask the applicant?
I have one real quick.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, so we didn't talk about the basement. Is there anything in the basement? Is it a full basement, a half basement? What is that?
It's, uh, some of the Yankee basement. It's a little over six feet and that was the issue. The furnace and some of the utilities are down there that the Gildeys just didn't want to give up.
Okay.
All right, that's it from the board. Okay, uh, Mr. Kennedy, unless you object, I'd like you to open, uh, I'd like to open this up to public comment just to hear if anybody is here for this application.
Sure.
Okay.
And April, why don't you, I just read your email one more time.
It's clerk@belmar.com.
Thank you.
All right. So if you're here from the public and you want to speak on this application, please raise your hand or email April.
We don't have anybody.
All right, very good. We'll close the public portion. Uh, and from there, uh, Mr. Kennedy, you want to walk us through the administrative?
Sure. I think we'll carry, uh, in, uh, uh, April, I guess, uh, yeah, they, is there enough room on that August, the August meeting for, uh, the application?
I will make room.
Okay. So what's the date of that application? I mean, that hearing, April?
August 27.
August 27. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Gildea, what we're going to do is carry this hearing to August 27, 2020. Uh, and there'd be no further notice required. So anyone who's listening in the public, uh, or is interested, please note that this hearing will be continued on this application on August 27, 2020 at 6 o'clock PM. Uh, there will be no further public notice. And, uh, in the meantime, Mr., uh, Gildea and his representatives will meet, uh, with, uh, Ted and/or the borough engineer to resolve, uh, any issues or clarifications or discussions that need to be resolved. Uh, so the board will ultimately know what it's voting on, good, bad or indifferent. And with that, Mr. Gildea, just for the record, do you on behalf, um, uh, do you consent to extend the timeframe with how much the board has to act on the matter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, Mr. Chairman, just for good measure, we have a motion to carry it to August 27.
I'll make that motion. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Greig.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One opposed? All right.
All right. So that, uh, hearing is carried.
All right. Thank you. And Teddy, I'll catch up to you.
Thanks, everybody. All right. Uh, was there any other business, April?
No, that was it.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Greig.
Second.
No, thank you, Mr. Malanga.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night. It was real good to see Mr. Greg.
Yes.
Goodbye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.